Yeah, we get the overtime.
I only have seven or eight. I have seven or eight. What do you have?
Zero, zero.
I have seven on seven. Seven on seven.
No.
Go ahead and start our council meeting, please, and if we can stand for three please.
Um, hello.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, liberty and justice for all.
Councilor Ted Dill.
Here.
Councilor Mary Zink.
Here.
Councilor Letty.
Here.
Senator Nancy.
Here.
Councilor Russell.
Here.
Councilor Yurada.
Here.
Councilor Albee.
Here.
Mary, how's that?
Okay, what? So we move on to our audience of citizens now. Anyone that would just cancel on anything that's.
Yes, all right.
All right, yes.
Susan Krasinski, eleven, let me get to her. Good evening, Mr. Mayor.
All right.
Council members, support staff and citizens. My subject is law, police recreation and by Sentinel Park. And I speak on behalf of those citizens who partly use this park for that purpose. We want to thank you for the opportunities we've had to stand before you then ask for a way for us to be allowed to continue the practice to law, police recreation and by Sentinel Park. We want to thank you for listening to us and taking us seriously and doing so respectfully. We want to thank you for all the time, effort and resources that you have put into this process on our behalf. We want to thank you for the stress, grief and conflict that you have been willing to endure on our behalf during this process. We know this is a difficult, internal process for you. We are grateful for all you have done for us. It is valued and appreciated. Thank you all.
Thank you. Thank you. Um, anyone else, voters or citizens, either present or. Vice. Hi, okay, we're going to go to the rest of the citizens. Thank you much. Um, so. The mayor's update. So just want to update a couple, a couple of things. So we, we had the first meeting of the Affordable Housing Committee. We appointed, obviously, the members that our West Council meeting met. Last week. I think last year, last week, yeah. Yeah, so, uh, you know, it went well and we're, there's a public meeting, just to tell everyone there's a public meeting tomorrow night, which will kind of explain, uh, you know, the whole process to the public. And then the committee will move on with their, with their job. There's a quick timeline. If they can just come to the council by May first, I think, right? The draft.
Latest, yeah.
Latest, right, yeah, hopefully early. So they have a, a lot of work to do, but we have our time attorney, Jennifer, obviously helping out as well as the, we have a consultant, obviously, that was hired, so. We'll get it done, so we'll get that started and we'll work through that process. So thank you to the committee members that volunteered. And I also want to mention, we, we had another meeting of the Senior Community Center and, from our state reps, all the brief over there, Donna and Kathy and folks. So they had some interesting things to say about our funding, which, you know, I guess maybe what we suspected here that state funding will be very difficult going forward.
I wouldn't keep counting on that, but it's something we'll always explore as we get closer, but before you get even apply for state funding, you need to have shovel ready project, which we're working pretty hard on that at this point. So just keep that in mind.
And there's different options we're looking at, so I just want to make sure that the committee, when they were charged, that they keep it open in mind at whatever options there may be. And also the council, because, you know, council puts things out there and talks about funding and maybe non-existent and you know, needs to be a town building or doesn't, that's all be determined, but we want to wait. And much like the committee, until they finish their work, we want to wait, put it open in mind and see what comes back to us and see what our best option is to get this project going. So let's keep that in mind and let's wait till we get all the facts in. Proceed the process to make a decision.
That's a good idea, Mayor. I think that I could just say that the meeting was very informative and I appreciate the other reps joining me. Finances are going to be a struggle. You know, there is not a lot of free money for something like this, but we will certainly reach out, see whatever we can do at a state level and, you know, and see what other options we have that are available to us. Open minded about it and see what we can do.
Thanks. Okay, that's all. I just want to update those two things quickly and move on to our sent agenda. We have two items on there, donation for the control account, perspective dollars, and donation to the funds for supply expenditure account department. So we have those two sent items, questions, go ahead, take motions.
Can you move, Mayor? Can motion to accept the two, the agenda items tonight.
Second on that, second. Any other, any comments or questions? Are we none, all is in favor? I'd like to pose a move on to our business.
Right, thank you, Mr. Yan. So the first item on the agenda, proposing amendments to chapter three, having moved to chapter thirteen, parks and recreation, open space. Amendments to maybe the making for, I believe, in a long journey, but we are here. And last meeting, opportunity, we had a public hearing coming from the residents, parks and recreation, conservation commission. And we have listened to all of them and proposed language here for council consideration. In a nutshell, the, the new language has new ordinance, a language about the leech and animals should be officially in consent, people less of designated public property. There's a description on what those designated public properties are. And then there's also a section on where animals must be officially seventy or less on non-designated public property. That's another section. And then third one, it also tells us where animals are not allowed. And then finally, we entered into the ordinance language specified by Sentinel Park. Even though it is a different property, but the conservation commission had requested all open space combined with the ordinance. But we have entered a language in there to say that ordinance is allowed to be used for the four, for the six month period. Beginning January first, twenty twenty, January first, it's going to take actually thirty days for us to get the outcomes out and posted and with the public there, of what's on there. Six month period ended July thirty, twenty twenty-two. That's the middle area of the open space. And that will also give us some time to post times, entrance device and tail park as well as the open space, what is allowed and not allowed. So I will not go through the whole documents, but I'll open it up for any questions.
Yeah, thanks, Roche. We, we added, just spread some, did we add some wording? We added some other parts and.
Yep.
For the record, it's just.
Like rules and all of it.
Okay, yeah, I know we've worked on this for a very long time. We still have more work to do. This is not the end of it, but at least we're, we're covering most of the town. With the new leash ordinance, which I think we need to do for everyone's safety. So for the dogs and, and for the people, so I think it's a good thing. That's what we're at, discussed it. We're, uh, two years, how many?
Three.
Three, within three, outside plus. So, uh, we still have some more work to do, which we'll get done, which is why we're on short leash, get it done. All right, so, uh, we'll work on that. So that's, anyone else have any, any comments?
Yes. Yes. Can enforce this with your neck, at least in the dog venture, just the animal control.
Well, they, we'd be the animal patrol officer, uh, off the police, uh, I think they do.
Yeah, we can't, we can't have a conversation with them, because any, certainly one person right full time, which is not even.
Yeah, because of the ordinance, I just believe.
Right, yeah.
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 Roche, you said January first, but it says February first.
That's right, that's.
Oh. Actually, you said January first, we each other.
I'm sorry.
I was beginning to think.
That's right, you didn't say that, yes.
Yes.
Yeah, because we're not going to get it done, we have thirty days from publication.
Yep, yep.
So.
Um, just one note about the definition of designated public property. I know there were a few public comments from some individuals at Parks and Rec that were addressing the properties listed under that definition. And I think, um, if I remember correctly, I think it was Donna Bobey, who had mentioned that there were certain facilities such as, um, you know, community pools, turf fields, golf courses, et cetera, that could, it could lead itself to some damage to those facilities if there are dogs that are, that are using, um, those particular surfaces. So I was just wondering if, if, you know, whether we discuss that on the council, whether that's something that's kicked down to the ordinance committee, you know, what, whether or not we're, we're considering that approach for Parks and Rec on what services should be addressed on the designated public property.
Well, it's already in, the language pretty much says that all being used playgrounds, golf courses. Yeah, dogs are not allowed there. Yeah, yeah, okay, yeah.
If I could just address that, it's Jennifer Capule. I'm not quite sure why you can't see me, because my video is on and I could see me earlier. Um, when you're, when you're on television there. Um, that, that was addressed. Um, it had been previously addressed with changes, um, so that what you're seeing in your summary is not the original language that was proposed. We did make those changes that were recommended to address that issue. And they did take a look at, at this final language they had coming into your last meeting for the public hearing, some additional changes and those were made. And that, that language that you're looking at is the final language that incorporates all of the changes that they requested.
Okay, thank you, Jennifer. Anyone else, any other questions before we take a motion?
Okay, move to adopt amendments to chapter three, animals, section three dash two definitions from chapter thirteen, parks and recreation. And open spaces, section thirteen dash thirty-two, dogs. Amendments shall be published in a newspaper having circulation in the town of Berlin, which shall be effective thirty days after publication.
Second on that, second on that. Any other comments or questions? Are we none, all is in favor? I'd like to pose. All right, so move.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Agenda number two, amendments to chapter sixteen, concession, concerning, 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 because for the handicap, we shared this with the public last time, there were no public comments. It's coming to you as presented before. The only change here is that animal requirement, the requirement, so once a person applies.
Yeah, I, that's great efficiency, yeah, so makes sense. Yeah, any comments from the council? Okay, here we go, so I take a motion.
Okay, move to adopt amendments to section sixteen, dash fifteen D of the taxation finance ordinance. Uh, at chapter sixteen of the town of Berlin code. A book to amend the process for applying for an exemption from personal property taxation with vehicles for the handicap. Amendments shall be published in a newspaper having circulation in the town of Berlin, which shall be effective thirty days after publication.
Second on that. Second on that. Any other comments, questions? Are we none, all is in favor? I'd like to pose.
Thank you. Agenda number three, benefits consulting services. I recall, I mentioned to you that we were going out within the first five years since we hired up at this consulting. And we did that and we got some responses and I'll have the news on the line there to give us an overview of where we landed. Want you then?
Hi, good evening, everybody. Um, so, as you know, we work with a benefits consultant to assist us through our all things benefits with the town and the board of ed. The person that we're currently using through USI, Chris Monroe, has been with us for seven years. We have a very strong working relationship with him. We took the account out to bid, uh, just to make sure we're being fiscally responsible. We did get three bid results back. Um, one of them was removed for being too high and that was locked in, which left us with two very comparable proposals. We brought it to the benefits committee, which is the committee made up of the union presidents, and after talking through the bid proposals, everybody was in agreement that they're very happy with our current broker consultant and the services provided by our current and those compared to the second bidder were very comparable and the committee agreed that they wanted to recommend staying with USI consultants so that we kept the history. Um, we've had a great working relationship and it's working very well. So we're proposing to remain with USI consultants.
Any questions for Denise? Any questions for Denise, Council?
Denise, just a quick, quick clarification question, just on the, um, the fees between twenty twenty-three and twenty twenty-seven. Just accounting for the twenty-five hundred dollar increase each year during that period of time.
I'm not sure what you're asking me.
So just, where does that increase come from? Is that just a standard market rate increase? Is that?
That's their proposed increase, so I think they're asking for a standard rate increase. I mean, USI, I believe, the last five years, we've had the same rate with, actually probably the last seven, we've retained the same, um, the same fifty-five thousand dollar rate. So they are looking for in the last two years, actually maybe three, an increase to that.
Thank you. Any other questions? Here we go, take a motion.
Okay, Mr. Mayor, I move to authorize the town manager to sign a five-year contract with USI Insurance Services for the period of July one, two thousand twenty-two. June thirtieth, two thousand twenty-seven, amount of two hundred and ninety thousand dollars.
Second on that, second. Any other comments or questions from the council? Scott, which on the floor, all in favor, I propose a motion here.
That's a, thank you, Denise.
Thank you.
Then that item number four. The road bridge replacement, implementing traffic courses, go closer to it. Mr. Han, you want to say something?
Yes, I do. Good evening. Um, this follows the public information meeting that was presented by Weston Sampson. And this is really focusing on comment, comments we got from the planning and zoning commission during the section eight twenty-four review. They asked us to look at the initial cost to do, to keep the bridge open during construction versus closing it. And at that time, I was a proponent of closing it. So I was arguing the case with the planning and zoning commission. They were actually pretty adamant that we should look at it. So Weston and Sampson has both options on the table right now. You can go either way. More, longer construction duration for the keeping it open option. Um, the cost increase was less than thirty-six thousand, it was less than forty thousand dollars, which surprised me. Because there were some maintenance protection and traffic items that actually came off. I was, I thought, contract costs would just go up quite a bit. So I am now recommending that we keep the bridge open, especially with the police department here and, you know, it's just busy and four thousand cars a day, whatever. I'm recommending that we stay with the bridge open during construction. We also are getting funded by lots of, so the cost increase, I'll be seeking from the CROG. So it's, there's really no out-of-pocket cost to the town, it's just more time. So my thought was, and I was going to put for discussion on this, but if the town council feels strongly, they can make that motion that I've written here, and then I can take that to the CROG and say, the town says, keep it open. With no, you know, with a lot of certainty, because it'll be actually in the minutes of this meeting. So that's sort of where we, where we are right now.
Okay, I appreciate that. I, I now agree, you know, to the council wants, but that you should leave the lane open and that's my fear would be it always seems to happen. If we close it, then what was the timeframe, three, three months possibly?
Possibly, yes.
Yeah, and possibly, so.
Yeah.
Three months, maybe come six months, and then we're, and then, yeah, that, that would be my biggest fear. It'd be nice to get it done in three months, but.
Well, I was going to add, we, we closed Burn Street.
Yes.
And that was probably my shutdown rate ones.
Yeah.
So I know Peter thinks it's three or four months estimate.
No, no, I know.
That's an engineer's estimate, but we've seen.
All, all, well-intentioned, no further comments.
And I know, they were like, while I was here, I've seen that, even if you close it, sometimes the contractors will then just take that opportunity to, you know, do what they want, when they want, because they have walls on both sides and not, people aren't driving by. I think if people are driving by, they might, they might feel more giddy out.
Yeah, or, or they find a problem, you know, I mean, they find a problem, they, they fade apart and now, oh, we, oh, wait, now this was very, you know, it just, it happens, right? So that, that would be my concern about closing it, that it wouldn't be just three months. Uh, even that's not really acceptable, but I, I tend to believe it would go on. Basically, I'm some.
I, I would tend to agree with you, yeah. So that, I would, I would be in favor of, of certainly keeping it open.
What say you, the rest of the council?
There's no, there's no change in start time, is there, Mike? Depending which way we go, it's basically start.
When we get one minute, that, it, it wouldn't be any delay. I mean, depending on the weather, of course, but as far as, you know, us closing versus keeping it open, um, that would affect the start time.
And I guess, I know that somebody brought up a question about what the, what a backup plan could be. The backup plan could be the detour, if we need to.
That's right.
But really, in keeping it open. Because it's such a bottleneck right there, because there's really no easy way to get around.
Yeah, and you have the post office right there, too. I mean, you know, they, all their trucks would have to go around, go down Kensington, you know, it's, it's kind of awkward for them. And also police department going north, they'd have to either go camel's back or use that long tour and so on, it's, uh. And they already did that during the Burn Street Bridge, where you were cut off going to Farmington that way, so.
One says enough for the immediate future.
And I can tell you, Mike, there's a road that I went, go for, I travel on a lot, Stratford, cut across, who knows, if I'm going to get the same setup going on, all summer bridge. You got the traffic lights out there, it still works pretty well.
Yeah.
Well, you know, it's a busy road.
Well, I tested, we did Burn, on Berlin Street. They had that, they were doing the rehab and they ripped off the deck. They actually had the traffic ticket on both sides and I tested it. And when there's no traffic, it flipped pretty quick, because it's like a detection system. So it actually, it, it worked and it's pretty visible.
Yeah, I go to Crum on Rocky Hill that way most of the time. It's the same thing for me, so. It's pretty good.
The only one, one concern is, so the traffic light, people are going to be backed up going towards, uh, uh, Main Street there. I, I would hope it wouldn't back up traffic.
To Main Street.
That, that, that did go through my mind for a mush hour, because you mentioned the quantity of cars. I'm, I'm thinking now what's whatever, but I get to where it is, but I hope that does pack it up, uh, through that Main Street intersection, that, that, that would, you know, during, during rush.
It can also do light timing.
Yeah, I think it probably would, yeah, okay, because that, that, that would be a concern, you know, if that happened.
And I don't know, we, is there a detection system?
We, we will look at that.
Yeah.
And we'll come up with timings for that. Our, I'm not a traffic engineer, okay? I'm a structural engineer. But I do know, we do that. We, we actually look at timings. We, we, you know, make accounts and we look at your peak hours and we will get stuff moving.
And it'd be the peak hours that we worry about that way, you know.
Yes, and we're, we're doing that on a number of other locations, so we understand how it works.
I'm sure, I, I'm sure you've got.
And we'll, we'll, we will try to abide by the fact that we'll keep road off, you know, the traffic off Main Street. So at least you've got enough moving through on that.
Appreciate that, thank you. Anyone, anyone else? Okay, so we'll go ahead and thank you for the presentation tonight, Mike, and go ahead and take a motion.
I move to authorize the town manager to direct Weston Sampson engineers and proceed to final design of the Kensington Road Bridge number zero three six five seven. Placement project, focusing only on the alternating traffic design option to maintain traffic during construction.
Second on that, second. Any other comments or questions? Are we none, all is in favor?
Aye.
Vote, all right, motion carries. Thank you. Take mine.
Then item number five, to request a way of the town, the, the, the requirements for the purchase of the fire purchase from Pierce Manufacturing. Recall the side of the council, I speak and it's go back to you, according to the man. If you have any questions, I'll have Jim on here.
No, well, I don't know, you guys have any questions? Should we make Jim walk up or do we go on up or down? It's a lot of watch.
You don't, you don't have to.
No, no, he just, he's too much power from there. I think it was very well explained. I think we're getting ahead of the, you know, saving some money down the road and thank goodness with all the inflation we're facing, we could head this one off ahead of time, which is, I think, smart for the, for the town. So I think it's a good, good deal. If everyone else agrees, we'll take a motion, go ahead.
Okay, moves away the town of Berlin bidding requirements to award the purchase of two new fire trucks, squad four and engine eight from Pierce Manufacturing. And the approval of the not budgeted transfer by the board of managers, amount not to exceed one million, eight hundred thousand dollars. This is in the best interest of the town.
Second on that, second. Any other comments or questions? Are we none, all is in favor?
Aye.
Pose, all right, so move.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Save your walk up.
You have two more to go.
Oh, you're here, no more, okay, oh, maybe we'll get you up here, we'll see.
Then item number six is a request of way of the town of Berlin, requirements, purchase of some, some paint module from over by the town. The fire purchase.
I read.
A little while ago, we switched over to new fire records, my door, computer system, software system, which is produced by Alpine Software, which is Fred MX. And that allows us to keep track of our people and payroll and reporting to the state, federal government. We also utilize NDTs, which is mobile data terminals in all the fire trucks. And a mobile, mobile data terminal allows us to, when we receive a call, a guy gets in the truck, he has a computer screen in front of him, which gives him direction on how to get there, pertinent information of the caller, what, what they, they stated, hydro locations, hazards within building, hazards materials, elderly people, animals, whatever is in a computer. We don't have that system tied into the Alpine software. So what we're proposing is that we purchase the Alpine software version of that, change over to that. That'll also give us the ability for the fire marshal's office, when they go out and do an inspection, they'll be able to update pertinent information about the structure that will be provided to the, the officers in the front seat of the truck. So it, it just all ties together and moves forward.
Great. Well, makes sense. Keep, keep you guys updated with the best information and you save this one as our residence, so.
I see.
Yes, the, any questions for Jim? Go ahead and take a motion.
Then moves away the town of Berlin bidding requirements of purchase mobile dispatch mapping and GPS software, Alpine software, it's for the market. Amount not to exceed eleven thousand, seven hundred and sixty-five dollars. This is in the best interest of the town.
Second on that, second. Any other comments or questions? None, all is in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you. Tonight, item number seven, you probably recall, we came few months ago, the gasoline prices going up to uh. Over the rest of the year, but this one, he is to lock the gasoline contract for the county of twenty twenty two. And the timing is crucial for this, so Jim, can you tell us?
So our contract, our contract expires, if you remember correctly, December thirty first. We did extend it to allow us to get through the summer because our contract did not have enough gallons. Um we applied with CROG to go out and bid with their consortium. That bid is open tomorrow, of course, they have the council. To price mark, the price out there, I mean, today it's pretty good, it's uh the New Haven price is two dollars and thirty cents a gallon, which is pretty good, that's about fifty one cents over what we're currently paying. Wouldn't be that bad, it would be uh thirty six thousand dollars in additional fees, which is a lot better than what I budgeted for, for next year. Because I budgeted off of, off of the sale, retail price. So the problem is, is that we opened a con, or they opened a bid tomorrow. And then we have to watch the stock market, and we have to award that contract. For us to award the contract, we have to buy the futures or contract to buy the futures the day before and then purchase on market the next day. Um with that all being done, what I'm asking you to do is let's sit down with uh with the town manager and finance director and myself, review the bids. And sign a contract with whoever we see is the best suited for the town, hopefully it's the lowest bid, but we'll, we'll look at that, and then when. Then when the, um that will be for. Administrative fees and trucking. And then when the price comes down, or when we feel the price, price is pretty good now. Well, when we feel the price is right, we will lock in for the sixty six thousand gallons, which will give us the nuts, and then the town manager will report back to you what we exactly did. I mean, if it was up to me today, two dollars thirty cents, I'd lock it. It's been up and down all week long, some people say it's gonna come down a little further, right after the holiday, I'm not sure, I'm not a percent sure on that. There's a lot of variables out there right now. So what we're asking for is permission to allow us to move forward with a, with a contract and select the vendor.
Thank you, long and short, seems to be, seems to be the prudent approach. Mark it away, but anyone else, council, questions? Good, pretty good. All right, all right, move on and take a motion.
Okay, moves award the contract for the purchase of sixty five thousand gallons of gasoline for the calendar year two thousand twenty two. Better than that, that's the town's needs utilizing a large purchasing consortium.
Second on that. Any other comments or questions? None, all those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you. Section.
And item number eight, is approval of the purchase two grinder pumps from Russell Resources. Made bidding requirements for purchase installation of the pumps, and so the story again is, I think we can explain.
Uh yeah, we like, back in, before I came, we had purchased some grinders, actually the job for that engineering job is common use, but the grinder is basically. They grind up, I need to cure it beforehand, hopefully it's for, they reach the pump so we can pump it, this is on the Berlin Turnpike. And since then, we've had several series of these failures, and typically they've only been warranty for three years and a half, fail after three and a half years, so. Buying them again, of course, however, we found out that we, it's not that much cheaper, but it's a little bit cheaper if you buy just the grinder. Period, the uh items itself, the teeth, and not the motors, we have the motors, I want to bring you a picture so you can take a look at it. Kate, if you want a copy, I'll put it in your real office if you want.
I think blow, I think blow up, yeah.
Well, we can get a bigger one.
Yeah, I think a bigger one would be nicer.
The actual motor is out of the picture here, the motor is here, this is the good one, this is not the bad one, this is not the one that's deteriorating, this is a good one. This is all, and also the picture is pretty good quality, because we're forty feet down below the rain, so this is a, a pit. And I can't see it, but there's a tail, that's what happens, is that these cutters actually grind it up and almost make a rug. Uh we've had them as hot up as long as thirty feet, this was only six feet, so it was a little easier to clean. But the problem is that each teeth on here fall apart. Right now, we're operating only on this one, this is the only one we have, and we're looking at purchasing two more, uh but these will be the teeth for, so you have pump motors. So uh basically, these uh grinders are coming out of Canada, so there's no problem return, there's still a delay in time, anywhere from eight to twelve weeks, but we don't have to worry about shipping. Now, we did look at other alternatives, uh what they call muffin monsters, uh trouble is with the muffin monster, uh it costs about a hundred thousand dollars a piece. And they've been bought over by a Chinese firm, according to ours consultant, and the quality is inferior, so it doesn't really help us. So we're kind of stuck for the time being with these grinders, as, as strong as they do, in terms of work of gases.
So how old are these uh engine part?
Uh these are only three years old.
Just three years, so that's.
They seem to fail right after the warranty.
Okay, so would it not be helpful to take a look at what a whole unit would cost?
Oh, no, this is, oh, the whole unit's a little bit more expensive, because we, we can salvage the motor, so.
Okay, so the, so the, so these.
So we're salvaging the motor, but we're, we're getting grinded cutters, that's, we don't have it, yeah.
Right, so that's weird.
We've tried to rebuild these two with additional cutters and, uh, because it's, we, we, we've got extra set of cutters, but the, usually the, the item fails before we even put the cutters on. Yeah, it's, it's that bad, it, well, you can see just by the, by the condition, this is not the best of locations, uh in terms of.
We always look forward to your pictures, so.
I can't, I just did, I was trying to get him to biggest possible sample.
Yeah, that's right, he wanted a sample. A pipe sample was the nicest, yeah.
We have one point two, one point three billion gallons, so I got plenty, plenty of options.
So we always wondered, Mike, you really don't want to know about.
Yeah, there's an inline incinerator, it burns, it's like, you know, it's a methane. Well, we bring that to the Madagascar, so it's ours problem.
Yeah, they burn it there, right?
What's the biggest destroyer of the cutters, these wipes? I, I think it's the wipes, we, we, Jen, this is our largest coverage station, obviously, there's a sewage coverage station on the Berlin Turnpike. And um it, it, ever since I've been here, it's been, it's had problems, one wipe situation or another. Now, um back about six years ago, when we had a thirty foot, we had to close down the whole station and bypass it. It costs thirty thousand dollars to do, you had one, one opportunity, so, so trying to keep up with this in terms of operation, it may, it's actually saving this money a lot more, because. Once you get a tail in there, clogs up the line, and you don't have much choice, but you have to take it all out and bypass it. If you run it through the pump, and you can appreciate this, the pumping colors will get clogged up, they can't pump.
Okay, um. Any questions from Ray? Ray, off topic for a moment before we do the uh motion, I, I just, I don't, the water bill, did, did the water rates go up?
Not ours.
No, no.
Very funny.
Kensington's doing, Worthington's is not ours.
So Kensington, yeah, because I saw.
They're actually, their water bills now is higher than ours, plus they have a tax on top of it.
They got the one percent, yeah.
Well, well, one has one point one, and the other one has one point five four.
Yeah, one's one point five four.
Where they didn't has ours.
Oh, wow, yeah, and there were other reasons I asked, if I saw some, there was some chatter on social media about water bills going up, but so.
Well, Kensington one went up substantially, it's actually four dollars and forty cents, and ours is only four dollars and fifteen cents, for a hundred cubic feet, plus they have a bill rate of one point one.
But why did, why did their, what?
I can't answer for them, but I, you know, it is what it is.
Whatever, yeah.
And uh Worthington's is one, four, four dollars and twenty five cents, and it also has a one point one bill.
Right.
And actually, I'm a Worthington resident, so I can't, of course.
Interesting. That's a, a topic to be discussed later about the three water districts in town, back from nineteen twenty nine.
They're a hundred years old now.
Yeah, yeah, probably times, that's over, you had celebration, celebration, maybe, maybe change.
There you go.
There's a bad word for it, change. Maybe we could work on that with that, but, okay, yeah, I just was curious, because I, I, I didn't, I didn't think it was our, I mean, I think the water rates were.
Yeah, you made it for Kensington.
Lucky you.
Yeah.
I'll mention it in the next item, though.
No.
Basically.
Okay, so, so, sorry to interrupt this, so we'll go ahead and uh no other comment or questions for Ray, but I think I'm.
Okay, moves authorized account manager to waive the bidding requirements and warrant the purchase. And installation of two new grinder pumps from Russell Resources, not to exceed eighty five thousand dollars, if this is in the best interest of the town.
Second on that. Uh any other questions from Ray? Uh vote all those in favor?
Aye.
So move.
Thank you. Tonight, number nine, is water control department bid favor for DPC Engineering LLC for water and sewer evaluation for fiscal year twenty twenty two.
Okay, Dave Perkett is basically, DPC is, is an engineering firm, they're really good at doing the design of the demo, or of the pump station. Back in twenty sixteen, twenty seventeen, they actually did a cost analysis for us. And uh at the time, and this is where we talk about the rate, our water rate hadn't changed for eight years. So one of the, one of the reasons that we needed to have it upgraded, of course, the store rates were changed almost annually. Because the upgrades to the Madagascar, we of course don't have a treatment facility, so we have to pay their upgrades directly, so we pass that along to the consumers. What we now need is another study to not only tweak the rates that we think are necessary, because I have a whole bunch of different um priorities. One, and two, um this is important to us, because one thing they didn't do, which I think they need to do now, is uh we have. When I was going through the papers, I was looking at these fee structures that we have for, when we put on new customers, and it's, it's gotta be over twenty years old. And I was looking at that and saying, this is incompatible with everybody else with the charging. And I looked at some of the utilities quickly, we're charging far less, we are looking at potentially about four hundred new customers in the next two years. Assuming, you know, uh construction things change, because a lot of them are delaying construction because of material costs. Uh so I thought that Mr. Perkett and his company would evaluate this and give us an idea of what fees are being charged. Uh we're kind of behind the equal, because uh other utilities, and I'm a board member with the Connecticut Waterworks Association. They keep talking about fire fees, fire hydrant fees, we don't have any of that, so I think we're behind in terms of trying to get some of these other field fees instituted. So we can keep our rates to our customer there of a lower rate to the residential rate.
Okay.
So the bottom line is, what we would like to do is have a new rate study.
Yeah. Yes, and, and you mentioned it, so is our, our, the Berlin, the town, the town waterway?
Well, when, when we first hired him, we actually did, uh we, we had multiple engineers that we sent out, uh potential quotes to, and he was the cheapest, so we went with it. And so basically, that's why we're going with it, because he has established records of this before.
Are, 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 are water rates lower than you mentioned, what's the town, let's, I mean, how are, how's our water bill?
They're, they're compatible, they're, they're actually pretty uh reasonable, I think, uh NDCs is just a little bit higher than ours, and a few others are a little bit higher, but they have infrastructure, so. As you know, we're quite a larger area.
Okay, uh questions for Ray? Are you none, go ahead and take a motion.
Moves to any requirements for DPC Engineering LLC, update and revise a re, reading model which includes fees for various services, you know, twenty thousand dollars. This is in the best interest of the town.
Second on that. Any other comments or questions? None, all those in favor?
Aye.
Thanks again.
Thank you, tonight, item, I put ten month rate.
This happened to be this way. Basically, we did go to bid for this one, uh currently, the train doctor has a contract that ended at the end of this year, we went out to bid last year, uh two, two years ago. We had two, two bidders, the train doctor and a company, you know, a water tank, uh since then, he's the only bidder for this last term. He didn't have much choice, it'll be another two year term, um and, and his rates are not substantially different from the last current, so he thought it was a good idea to go with it. But it was going, it did go up a bit.
Okay. Gary won't give us a deal? San Peters would be cool.
Fair next.
How was that?
It's.
Ray, was there, if there was any reason why there was only one bidder, is there any other work?
It's, it's a, it's not, uh, 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 well, it's not, it's not a, 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 what you call a company that does a lot of work, it's a very finance. Activity that they do, nobody wants to clean out a lot of these pumping stations. He has the honey wagon, he does that for residential of subject systems as well, so he does that for us. Uh he also jets out, uh for instance, sewer lines that are clogged up, so these are things that most companies don't likely do per se, so.
Next, Mitch. Okay, any questions for Ray, any other questions? No, go ahead and take a motion.
Okay, moves award contract number twenty twenty two dash ten, routine repairs of minor emergency sewer services, including sewer pump stations. To train doctor into Berlin for service used by water control of other departments on a townwide basis.
Second on that. Any other comments or questions? Are we none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Okay, thank you.
Thanks, Ray.
Item number eleven. These uh some emergency affairs in the Main Street Bridge. You know, the flash passengers and roads. So this is a, say, a Houston, you have a problem, well, yeah, problem.
Yeah, uh another bridge, and following Ray's lead, I'm gonna give you some handouts. As I'm speaking, I'm.
I miss yours aren't as good as this, maybe they are, I don't know.
So just explain the, the pictures, this is a two-part bridge, half of it is a concrete, a box, a concrete box culvert, which is in solid shape. The other half is not in solid shape, it's a steel arch pipe culvert, you'll see some, um the last photo, where there's still missing from uh the bottom of it. We were proposing to originally reline. The culvert, the, uh basically a circular culvert, because the concrete part was good, it was just like thirty years old and has plenty of life left in it. However, Hurricane Ida came through, um they asked my plans, you know, uh they'll just push them downstream. DOT calls us up, wanted to go out there, those pictures were taken when I was out there with DOT. Um so what happened was more steel went missing from the bottom of the uh, the, the metal culvert. More, the base, the invert is being, is being undermined, DOT wants to do something now. And we have plans, we're trying to get through permitting process, we have the, the town permit. We have the state permit, but the army corps is holding us up, and they didn't like the relining approach, and DOT doesn't like the relining approach, so now I'm seeing the writings on the wall, no one likes it. So, and, and Jack, when he was here, he had had experience with relining and it was successful, so I still think it was a viable option. But right now, we have to do something short term, so when I, what I do is I got three quotes from contractors who were pre-qualified. Um didn't go out to bid because of the time constraints, because I want to get this done this winter. Um yeah, three quotes, and the lowest quote was a hundred thirty seven thousand, the second quote was a hundred sixty eight nine. And the third quote, the highest quote was two hundred thirteen thousand six hundred. Um we are recommending go with the lowest bidder, and what he is gonna do is put essentially. A concrete base in the, in the, inside the, the metal culvert, put concrete on the inland now with sides. Ramp up and down to the stream to make sure scour doesn't get underneath this culvert. Uh put rep rap, which is large stone, further downstream and upstream to protect that from scour. Um and essentially fill the voids that are now either under or also around the arch by pressure grab. And I think that'll buy us, I talked to our engineer, AI engineers, he said, probably three to five years, we can get out of that fix, and DOT will be inspecting it every six months. So I think that will limp us along until, and unfortunately, I think we have to go to full bridge replacement because of the permitting issues and the hurricane Ida damage that we've just experienced, so, yes.
So can I just ask, is it was Hurricane Ida, it was like the payment money that was available, that was.
Um I don't think they ever declared that storm, no, um and.
I know that was this past year, right?
I think, well, if if it does come out, we can get reimbursed after the fact. Yeah, we did for Isaiah's. We're getting a couple hundred thousand dollars, and that was after the fact, you know, we just. Yeah, I'm not counting on it, and we have funding that we were gonna use for the relining, so we'll take that. And then we can probably go to the federal local bridge program and get eighty percent reimbursement on the full bridge replacement, which I think will be the best deal for the taxpayer. But it just kills me because half the bridge is pretty good, you know, but you're kind of forced into this situation where you have to do the whole thing because it's the most cost effective. But when you look at it with the conversation, like, ah, you know, you only do half, so. Um, so that's that's the situation. So if you're in agreement, I can get this rolling if you, uh, authorize New England, New England Road Incorporated, who actually is working with us right now. They're doing, finishing up a four-bridge project. They did Hardest Drive, Willemir, Roland Street, and Worthington Bridge, and they did a good job, so. I have no, no problem with choosing the one. You're already so on the catch up with this, and that's a DOT project. So that's where we are.
Thanks. So, uh, any, any questions for? Um, okay, so we'll go ahead and take a motion on this.
Sure. We've authorized the town manager to turn into a contractor even with England Room Inc. of Clinton, Connecticut. Emergency repairs to the Glen Street Bridge number zero six nine five five, amount of one hundred and thirty-four thousand six hundred dollars. So authorize the town manager to increase the contract value for change orders, amount not to exceed one hundred and sixty-one thousand five hundred dollars. This isn't the best interest of the town.
Second on that.
Okay.
Uh, any other questions for Mike? Not all in favor?
Aye. Thank you very much. You can keep them.
They won't raise.
I'm not giving them mine. Thank you guys very much.
Thank you. Right, next time we need more actual hands-on.
Well, these are about seven hundred pounds. If there's a top, I can't.
All right, moving on. Item number twelve is yours. It's your comment.
Cancel the whole thing. Too many dates.
Yeah.
We're working hard on. New media watch. Very hard. A lot of work. Thank Keith for this one. So we got anything new?
No, I think it works out really well in several reasons. We did move July back a little bit, so you have, uh, forces of July, you know, you're not good in that. But it works out even better because possibility that the referendum on the senior thing, um, may happen in November. I haven't got the election calendar yet, but it could be that you're gonna be voting on a question on that July twenty-sixth. Because normally we vote on the beginning of September, and, um, your first meeting in September is the sixth. And I think, I don't have a calendar yet, but I think it might have to be by the stack, by the second or the third. So unless you want to have a special meeting in August, but you can see how things.
You can see how it goes, right?
You know, so and it won't be a one meeting if it happens. But I have to get the question to the Deputy of State, um, by, I think, the thirteenth of September. So it's kind of a tight thing. The interesting thing is, this is the latest you can have your November election. So the election will be on the eighth, and it's, you know, it has to be the first month of Tuesday, October, the first Monday. And it's, so it's late as you can have an election, and, uh, so it's being pushed out, but yeah, it's not really helping us with the, like, so. And just so you're aware, there'll be a constitutional amendment on this November election, also to allow for early voting. So that's going to be a very hot topic, and, um, it hopefully because of the media, uh, the pressure on that or the, whatever, the talk on it, uh, maybe more people will vote for the question. I think no matter when you have the referendum or when you have these special people who say, I never saw it on the ballot. So this might help or hurt.
I have to say, uh, this past election, they were, made it quite clear to turn the ballot over after what I've been, I thought they did a good job.
But thank you for that. We really try to, yeah.
Okay, uh, all right, so we, so we got our cap, calendar's good, but we're, we're, we're not saying. So, good. Want you to approve of.
Sure.
Take a motion to approve the adoption of the town council meetings calendar for two thousand twenty-two, January two thousand twenty-three.
Questions on that? Uh, all in favor? Close. Um, so, depending on some of these, we were talking right last time about ones that we never seem to meet. So what's the best way to to, uh, put these into mock polls for now? That we thought was bringing back, right, of course?
Yes, so I did start going through minutes and trying to find out what has, you know, been the way that everything along those lines. Um, I, I, I think that you should name your C and E committees and at least the ordinance and the rules and procedures, just to get that cleaned up. All right, and then it looks as though, and it's so interesting, you know, when you can sit through the minutes and go through them, but if some of these things just pop up, you know, there's, and I think these, um, subcommittees were set to maybe do one thing, and then they kind of fell by the wayside, and then they kind of got brought back at another point, which is all fine. Um, you know, and, um, so I, I don't, I think, and the calendar at one point was done by the rules and procedures. I haven't figured out when it was separated out or why, but it may have just been, uh, I think Linda Simmons and I were involved with that, and she plays us like the calendar. You know, committee, the public committee. Uh, but my suggestion is to at least appoint ordinance and rules and procedures, and then have rules and procedures kind of open fees and say, does anybody really want any of these subcommittees? You know, because a lot of these committees, I agree, they're not as needed as maybe years ago, because you as a body, you vote on a lot of this stuff. It's not done by other committee levels so much. And if there's a committee you're interested in, like the playing field or something like that, it's easy enough to send back in January or after all these meetings. Or if you want to do it now, then that's fine, you know, there's nothing that says you have to go away right now. But some of them, I agree, they're probably.
Yeah.
It's unable.
Yeah, yeah, so, yeah, so, okay, so the ordinance committee, we have, uh, on there now, uh, but. Sir?
Yeah, I have, I have, yeah, you're on there, Charlie's on there, Brendan's on there, Peter's on there, uh, Joanne Quillby's not anymore. That's who was up there. So remember, Jack, you know, is it?
Jack's standing, but it pays a Joanne?
Yeah.
Like, does that make sense to everybody? You good with that?
What did you say?
They have Jack, always Joanne.
So put, put, uh, Jack on there, place a Joanne, and the rest will remain.
That's a fun one.
That is a fun one, yeah. That, that's, well, that's the one we. He just, I work on a cap by Shin on number, committee numbers. Is that something that, what was it, procedures decided or is that?
Again, I'm sorry, on the number of the numbers, the number.
Who decided that? Is that something?
It's flexible according to how the, uh, the council wants it. At one point, when, um, you were the fiscal body outside of water finance, um, you didn't have, sometimes you had all members of the council participate budget, other times you didn't. So that's a very fluid number, and if you wanted to go down to only four, you can, or two, or you can go up to seven. If they think it's gonna be, you know, a lot of controversy at ordinances and you want to talk about most of them.
I mean, and the good thing is, Jack, is that, you know, the ordinance, I mean, we've worked on it, but it comes to the council anyway. You know, everybody gets their chance to, you know, you know, talk about it. I, I, I figured because we're such a small body.
Yeah.
There, there was a level of, not too many layers of separation.
No.
No, the body is. Yeah, that's, that's, that's fine. Uh, and, okay, so next, I'll be the boards committee versus.
Yeah, Charlie's on there, Mike is on there, and I know that one.
Okay. From three.
Good change.
As long as you guys meet.
Yeah, I mean, clearly last year.
There was, oh, the past two years.
Yeah.
But COVID is, you know.
And then, and the idea, of course, of any of these committees, um, you're the subcommittee, you have to have an agenda and you have to push this. And that's a whole other layer of, of, uh, of your, your, our representative.
Yeah, so any meeting, in public, right?
Yeah.
Um, all right, so you want to leave that alone? Is that okay for now? We haven't even met in two years.
No.
Too worried about that one. I, I, I think we can.
Haven't met in years. Don't, don't fill that.
Yeah, all right, that's, that's, uh, now the audit committee.
We get talked about.
Who's on it?
Do, let's say.
Brendan.
It was Brendan, Joanne, and Charlie, and clearly the question is to repeat that, right?
Right, right.
Yeah.
Yeah, we meet once a year when the financial statements are prepared.
Oh, right, right.
Still, audit is coming in.
Yeah, yeah.
I think it's great on the governing. I'm not from the governing. Sit at that meeting because it talks about, like, controls and, you know, financial controls or lack of.
Even though that comes to council, of course.
No, that doesn't. It's sort of finance, and they also have represented to sit on that. This is a separate audit committee.
Did we see the report of the?
You see the report, but I think it's good to.
Yeah, yeah, while they're talking about.
For them to, uh, share their observations about how things are done here.
Sure.
Um, because it's all about money and controls and procedures and things like that. I think it's important, at least one person, and it's once a year, and you just have to show up for the meeting.
I'm having your eyes.
So right now, it's Brendan, Charlie, and Joanne was on it.
So. When, when does that meeting occur?
We're not sure.
We're not sure. So there's no designated?
No.
No.
Audit is completed, and most of the time it's.
It's a one-shot deal.
Yeah, or, or, right, sometimes. It'd be hard to meet this year. Since last year's extended audit. Well, find a time that all of you can be, and the audit firm will come and just give their report then. You know, to ask questions for the numbers as well as the, uh, audit itself.
Yeah, I mean, I mean, with these, Jack, with these, these committees here, we just try and make sure all of us can make that day, you know, just. The council meeting, say, hey, can you make, we gotta do this committee meeting, and everybody make this day, trying to get everybody together. So you'd be interested?
I'm, I'm tired of that.
Okay, so we'll.
Got Jack to that.
And Jack to that. Also waiting on the audit committee. I guess. Despite for the board of. So, um, some of these, Kate, so the physical services committee, not really.
Not even sure what that is.
What it is? I don't.
Well, I think, and, and, and I think that's why you want those to, I'm trying to go through.
Oh, you want to do that?
Any history on any of these.
And any of the rest of them?
And some of them have probably seen their, you know, they're no longer in use. But, and, you know, you guys serve on these committees, not necessarily Donna and of course Jeff or Mike, but the other four have been on these committees before, and if you didn't meet, then maybe they're time to retire right now.
Yeah.
So, you know, and that's the thing.
There's no re-acting, yeah.
Yeah.
With the monitor server.
You didn't have to reserve them. You have the, you have the power to always form any time, and I think that's what happens sometimes is, um, there was a need, so a committee was formed. Um, you know, and that's it. But they're just, they're not, they're not the standing committee. They're like this little subcommittee thing, you know, in and out.
So would it be a good idea that, if the rules committee, instead of day per meeting?
Probably not, yeah.
Yeah, look, or, or as a need arises.
Seems a little bit better than, like, a little some time.
Well, you could do that, too.
Yeah, yeah.
I'm sorry.
As a need arises, we can always address it, because, you know, I don't see any playing fields, uh, you know, going searching like, you know, we all shouldn't be doing that again for a while.
Yeah, and exactly what you just said, it comes up and you need to form, you know, kind of advisory, you know, for something, usually for, you have that power. I mean, the same thing with technology. There was a conversation that we had about the technology, because that, I think, came into being when they did like, um, the technology fund. You know, it was a big deal. There was a lot of news on that, and where we're going and things like that. Well, we have done well with technology, but then I was talking to, uh, Brian Friedman about it, and he's like, well, maybe we do need a little committee so that you know where we want to go.
Oh, okay.
Because there's still so many changes coming in with technology and the speed that it all changes. And it's not just, you know, me trying to figure out Zoom, it's also. I'm counting the number, count, count somebody that they get through. But it's also, you know, the, as part of servers and the wifi and the, you know, the wiring and all these other things that come into that.
Right, right.
And Mike, you probably know so much of that because of CSBN, that, you know, it's the whole.
And a lot of us who's looking to the future, like, what are we, what's coming down the pipe that we could take advantage of that would help?
Right.
Connect with citizens or, you know, things that, things that the town should be using the first.
Right, so that's where a lot of these, but, um, if we could meet with the, and, I mean, I, I don't want more meetings, but I'm happy to go to rules and procedures. Um, just because I really think it needs to be looked at if I can help you guys.
If you could pull whatever information you have on it, because I don't think I have anything.
I mean. But, but we're here just real quick, so, like. One, one, be one off the table, the manager evaluation, the whole council does that, right? So I, you know, just as you guys be, the rules committee, that, that would be one, probably.
But I think that should continue, but, but it would be a seven.
Continue, yeah, yeah, it'd be seven, I'd be continued with seven members.
Yep.
The technology committee sounds like it's a good one to keep, you know.
You know, would say if there's a need, maybe.
Yeah, if there isn't, they'll be, so we, we can, we can leave it that way. I, I, what's the fire strategic committee? I'm just curious about that one. What is that?
Well, I think that started off as, um, it was to promote the fire department and encourage people to volunteer.
Ah, okay, okay.
So that's what I'm getting from the early ones.
Oh, was that, was that, that, that was when, uh, we were talking about some incentives for that, too, right?
It probably where these things came from, because that probably was a start of it.
Me, I'd rather leave out the whole council, too.
Yeah, so.
For that.
I don't, yeah.
It's important, it's important.
Cause right now, I'm the only person on that which.
Yeah, I, I, I need to leave it, but, but I mean, it's, I mean, the whole council would.
But just don't appoint anybody to these things, and we'll take a lot of just, you know, higher committees, and then by the time that it comes back, then you need.
Yeah. Yeah. Uh, all right, yeah, we'll, we'll.
Yeah, I mean, if they came with a fire department.
Yeah. Yeah.
We've had this conversation, but at some point we have to think about our profile, our, and, and, and the model. If you go to the, oh, the fire, when I'm checking, I mean, it's one of those things.
Oh, we're, we're.
All those things.
We need to.
Are we supposed to fix that?
I mean, it's, we would bring it without it.
Yeah.
Yeah.
But there are issues like that about the future.
Yeah.
You have to start thinking about, well, on the other end is falling down. At some point, Mr. Simon's gonna retire, so we need a, like, a fire chief. I mean, you have to start thinking about a model, but at the end, this is the right model. I don't even know that. Panic. Conversations about it, so might be a good, those were interested as well.
I'd like to stay on.
Yeah.
Well, it may be, maybe you didn't need it, so, so this is one of the things I would infer is that, make sure you have the appropriate name. But maybe that's not the appropriate name for this, they get watch, and then also give it, um, but what, what's the? But maybe that's not the appropriate name for this committee anymore. And then also give it, um, but what, what's the mission there? What's the purpose?
I mean, last six years.
So then.
Do you have any information on that at all, that committee?
All what I told you, and that is, is that it was originally formed for the.
To promote the fire department, to get people to volunteer.
Volunteer and things along those lines. So to me, whatever committee you come back with, you say you want to keep, us, we need to assign a purpose to that meeting. So if, ten years from now, five years from now, when I'm not here. Then, then people are not knowing, what are we being, what are we meeting for? What's the purpose of this? We have it in concrete, black and white.
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Okay, so that's where I think that the rules and procedures committee can kind of look at some of these things. You have the opportunity anytime out of committee or to form it in a different manner.
Yeah, maybe something different.
You know, and, but I would encourage you that if you have to do that, to make sure you have a purpose for that meeting.
Yeah.
What is the reason?
I mean, all of these, other than, I mean, the ordinance committee, uh, the playing, right, playing fields.
Playing fields.
Meeting house, I think.
Meeting house, yeah.
I don't know if the other calendar where. We might have to get that done, let's say, like, the week of January time, where we.
It's a calendar which one time done, when it's done by the rules and procedures.
Oh, it was.
So, and to be honest.
I could go back to that.
Yeah, and I, I can do it.
I'm, I'm smiling, you know. I'm a calendar master personally, I'm like. Calendar, one member, one, one time, I'll give you a calendar, yeah, probably that could go. Right, right. Honestly, probably most of these could go, but.
We have a council, do we have a council meeting that week?
Not that week, no.
Not that week, okay, so, I mean, well, maybe we can even meet that Monday, Monday, if that works for you. Charlie will check for us tomorrow.
Monday the tenth.
I'm looking at.
What is it?
That's the tenth, it's a Monday.
Monday, February tenth, July twenty-two. At least I'll come back to the council, Mike, and I want you guys come up with your suggestions, I'll be back at the council.
Yeah, let's see.
Do you know what community connotations?
I don't.
That's another one, we're not sure.
There's another one we talked about, see that my notes.
I don't think, no, they're never not. So Kate, did you want to join us for that meeting, too, at the time? Are you available? You got the history, Kate, you would.
I don't know what. What time do you guys want to do that?
Six or seven, it's fine.
Six works for me, get done. She knows where she's, it doesn't have to.
Right.
Six, okay. Mr. Reepenhead. Six P M, sounds good.
Okay. I'll come up with an agenda, do you think?
Yes, I think that's wonderful.
And I'll see what I can find.
Yeah, whatever, you probably have more than me assigned.
All right, it may not be, um. Right away, but I'll get to it in a second.
Okay.
So we're just gonna table this now, then, then you have to.
Yeah, until you, uh, wills.
Well, you can vote on the.
The ordinance.
The ordinance, the rules, the procedures, and audit. And I would suggest that you do that so that.
Yes, right.
Rules and procedures have the authority, so it'll be.
So audits Brendan, Charlie, and Jack, I'm gonna have rules, procedures, three laws, Charlie, Mike, and Peter, and Mark, Charlie, and Peter, and Jack. Got it?
Yes, so.
Okay, great.
Yes, that was, that was a good motion you made.
Oh, I'm making sure I get my notes straight here.
Perfect, we got a second. Look at how that works. That's amazing, isn't it? All right, so have a motion on the four of those in favor?
All right.
Vote.
Thank you, very good.
For your, good for now. All right, good, so we get the county on this report.
Let's bring those two glasses of water. Spike, spike, mic water.
A couple of items, uh, while you're on the calendar and dates, the main, the main image of this, uh, fall of the victims, you have the public informational position on affordable housing. So it is a, uh, it's here, but you can also join Zoom on the calendar scope.
So it's at seven tomorrow, right?
It's at, uh.
Yes, yes, that's seven. The public informational meeting's at seven, the committee meeting is at six thirty. We're having a quick committee meeting. Um, to go over the survey and then pick some January meeting dates, and then we're gonna, that's gonna be in Doc Macintosh, and then we're gonna be upstairs for the public informational meeting.
So it's up here. Thanks, Joe.
Thank you.
On the date, December twenty-first, the movie I had mentioned that, uh. Second, I have to be for the maintenance of the golf, of course, bringing one group to come and present to us as to, you know, their business plan, proposition, benefit. What it's going to do, how good they are, or the competitive.
Where they present the naturally.
Uh, to, well, it's mostly to staff, but I invited the whole commission because I'm inviting all of you.
Yeah.
And I'm also inviting anyone from the board of finance who wants to be there. It's at six o'clock in the evening, and we're gonna probably pick the community center rule, larger rule, and. Okay, so i- this is not something you have to, but I'm just letting you know, you're interested, um, media, so the two other groups are higher than, but the only pair is, uh, the scope is just about the same. So I wanna see, and the commission to see, what is it that we can bring to the table, just, uh.
You call?
Yeah.
Yeah. Yeah, just to send an email out.
Yeah, yeah, it was then the one to be in the establishment, so some.
So I don't know, Christmas shopping, probably should do that sometime, so.
Like, you should shop like that.
I, I would do that meeting at Christmas day.
He'll fix it, he'll fix it.
It is, um.
It's gonna be worth it, right? Yeah. Yeah, right. Starting line on this.
Um, but this, n- next one, all of you are gonna be happy with this one. Then, we are planning a joint meeting of the town council, board of finance, and board of events, right?
I found one. Yeah, yeah, that's it.
So, um, the mayor, the chair of the board of finance and board of it, like, today to talk about dates. So far, January sixth at six P M, works for everyone, that's a Thursday, I believe.
Oh, Thursday.
Uh, fourth is our first meeting, the council meeting, the fifth is Wednesday.
The sixth, I think we have a senior committee. Okay, he's answered first.
Yeah, that, we're, we're trying to get it done sooner. This should have happened in the fall, because it already, everybody submitted their budgets, I'll talk a little bit about that. Um, so, but I would encourage, what you do is if you can't make it, for you to caucus individually, and, and with me. I will talk about my priorities, what is it that I, or submit the guy, you know, I mentioned this today, of, of, of the town process. It appears that the budget comes to the board of finance, or by day or week before, right? And there's not enough time for that to process, it's, it's a lot of material in there and a lot of moving parts. Then the council's the same, they just get it through after the, they get it at the same time, but I don't think that's real, discussion takes place at the high school, but it's just a high level. What I wanna do is to move away from that and prepare people. You need to know what the council's priorities are, the way I see it. And I want all of us to think, not a one near budget, I want, we did what, fire trucks, not replacing one fire truck, we have nine of them, how many can be replaced, how many are going to be done? Same thing with police cars, the roads and bridges, and staffing, and IT infrastructure, all those things, so that. We're thinking, if you just see my nearby, it's, people are likely to say, well, we can push it up for one, and not do this. But I just want to have a sort of a strategic plan, a, a big picture, longer term, and also give you an opportunity as council members, and I ask the same for the board of finance, too. You speak to the residents, and you speak to the businesses, you know what to order, and what they're looking for, then ask that, at this meeting, you know, the, the last two meetings I, we sat, you know, like, everybody likes. Say, oh, we, we like to support education, infrastructure, public safety, yeah, nobody's gonna say no to that, but give specifics. What is it that, that you wanna see in the budget process, then rather than just, uh, I don't mean to not, um, what your priorities are, but it's too high level. What is, what is public safety? So trying to think about that with the caucus, and I am also going to do the same thing, and board of entities will put their priorities as well. Uh, one other thing that we discussed at the meeting, I think is a great idea, again, not everybody can do this, that Wednesday, possible, you know, organizing a tour. Of council members, board of finance, and, uh, board of events members, this time probably showcase, not showcase, go and show a couple of their mentor schools. Can't do all five schools because if you see it, you know, what, what prepares are needed, uh, what, what things have to get done, they'll experience it. Better than seeing it as a line, I don't wanna put it somewhere. So we're gonna try and arrange that.
So Julie just texted me, for some reason she, that she said the date of the tour was the fourth, I don't, I don't know how she, she told me, I just told her, remember, we had a council meeting.
You have a council meeting, I saw that, too, yeah.
So.
I'll tell her, can't do it, I'm a council.
Now we can't do it that night.
Yeah. These are tentative dates.
Yeah.
But we'll inform you by the, board of them will be informed for you to see. I would like to take the council and for you to see the, the fire house on Chuglin High. That's the only building that's known, it's horrible shape. They've been tried the roof this year, it's old school, it's damp, it smells old. Basically, it's, it's just bad, but it's good for you to see these things because it's hard to make decisions without really knowing. What impacts, you know, quality of life and service and everything else. So, and you don't have to do everything, but I, I think maybe. The reality of it, you can relate, some of these things might be good, maybe, and some of these things can be the sun, and I, 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 I say this. Man, I have given down quite a lot, looking for areas for leash-free area, but I think you should do, just feel it, go in there and look at it and see if this is something that would work. So from time to time, this is something you might wanna consider in the, in the long run. So that, uh, just not the day before the budget, it's a tool. So, uh. On the sixth, at six P M, for that, uh, joint meeting.
Those joint, yeah.
Yeah.
So they'll have to figure out that, yeah, where of the schools.
Yeah.
Can't be the.
Yeah, can't be the same.
Not for us, but. Let's say it'll be for the finance, I guess it's not, they don't want me saying it's actually, but whatever, so she could figure that out.
All right, so those are, uh, dates. So the next two items I'm just gonna bring you down as part of my budget discussion, but I, I need to bring them up sooner because some things have changed, has to do with staffing. For, for a long time, uh, we have shared a position with the board of head, I, I charge director, sixty-four, it's flat, sixty-four, it's big, forty, with the town. And, um, it has, I, I thought a couple of years ago, it was unmanageable, but the last year runs through with the COVID, that situation and all the requirements and the mandates and the. The pouring, and everything that has, uh, transpired over the last two years, that, um, it's, it, she can no longer do it, so she's some in a, a signature thing. She's gonna work just two percent of her time, the board of it. So I will be coming back, part of my budget process to ask for full, take the money that we have, and add some more, and town decides, a hundred thousand people. Human negotiations, all the labor law and everything that combined, then there are so many things that we are not doing, barely touching the surface, and I think there's risk associated with the help of more of this. I'll be coming, this will be one of my priorities. So the second one has to do with the facilities director, thanks a lot. Um, he's, has been overwhelmed for two and a half years. I mean, these folks are working, I'm kidding you not, six to eight, sixty to eighty hours sometimes, on call twenty-four seven. And it's just unmanageable, their, their life is, you know, it's falling apart, their health is not good. And Doug reached out to me and said, I can't do it anymore. And, uh, it previously had, like, a, many years ago, when construction was going on, superintendent position. There was a project manager, eventually, it was a way to combine the position, and no matter how good you are, one person can't do so much. And, and when you sit there and look at the volume of requests and everything coming in, one person can't handle it. So I was going to request a superintendent's position July one, but he can't wait till July one. It's really, I think it's life and health, and it's, it's going on with it, but he's offered me to, uh, step down, open producers' hours. To part-time, until I find someone, and they will have to make a decision to the, go stay with the town, uh, or, or, or move on, something else. But, what I like to do is, I'll bring this as an item next, this just happened to. I'll bring this as an item, because I need you to authorize, uh, my, I have a new position. The town has the money to do, tell, go produce its hours, and I have some savings with the V and A position, I can fund the position for three months, too. A new superintendent position, but I will have to request the position, so two things happen. I'll request one temporary basis. That you can't function without someone in that position, and then with the July budget, I would have a new superintendent position, I would be requesting. So just need you to know that, and this, this is happening, and just, uh. People who work with the two of them, they're trying really hard, but it's just only so much to, one person can't do, get the volume of, uh, requests and things coming their way.
So, so Denise is just gonna stay?
With the board of it, yeah, and I.
I'll have it out, that it's six, you say sixty?
Sixty percent.
Percent of what she does, yeah, would be stay with the board of it, yeah.
And that's effective immediately?
No, no, she's July one, right.
So that's for, that's for the.
In the study, then I was hoping to do the same thing with him.
We're talking, yeah.
But.
Can't do it.
Yeah.
No, smiling.
So, I think he's, he's kind enough, he's a, I won't just be hurt, like, the woman there, I've worked with you too, actually, I have the right person in Francis, so.
Maybe mine, what do you think?
The two of them are.
I'm gonna stay with the town if we get somebody else.
Well, if you get someone else, you let me know by April, so that you can stay with the town, otherwise we'll have to hire a director to.
Yeah.
Um, and a lot of these things have to do with, it's all that they're taking, what's something to their personal life, yeah, and, and I advise staff to always care of themselves first.
Number one, yeah, forgot about that.
They are, they are, have to set them first, and if they're, they don't want to compromise that. And, but two of them, uh, I mean, I have a lot of, okay, I've worked with a lot of, uh, good managers, but the two of them, a second demand. You know, I call it.
Yeah, erosions, hold on, you know, it's, when you say this, it's, I, you know, we don't, you wanna take care of them, and make your job, you know, filling for them, but I hope it works, but I. Uh, people, I, I always, you know, as a former government employee myself, honestly, you know, government employees get a bad name, you know, right? And then, you know, there's, with, with private sector, it's, it's bad, but, but I, I, I don't think people realize, and all the government offices I was in, that, that, the work that, you know. It's bad. But, but I, I, I don't think people realize in all the government offices I was in that the, the work that, you know. You know, government workers, they do a lot of extra work, but they really don't get compensated for it. They're paying them where you're at, you know, not everywhere, but, but I mean, it.
Government.
Right, could be, yeah, well, yeah, that's true. I mean, you can't, you can't just give somebody a bonus or raise because they have a job, you know, they got their. Set pay scales and your set job, but there's so many other things that they do. You know, that people don't realize the extra hours that you put in more than what your position description.
Yeah, exactly, yeah.
Yeah, that's, and so, yeah, uh, it's. Yeah, it's, uh. I'll get that. Anyway, yeah, so we are, what are we gonna do, fix that?
So, yeah, I'll, so I'll come back next time. What I wanna do is to draft a job description. If you're boisterous, don't approve it. That's fine, but I think it's tied on. Because that just.
Gotta do it. Good question. So what happened? Okay, all right. Uh, special committee reports, uh, there aren't any. As the fire strategic committee or the other committees, they're, they're, they're meeting, whenever they do. Uh, all right, topic communication, do we have votes? I got one.
Last week was, uh, the Sunday, uh, or eightieth. Here since Pearl Harbor. And I'm not sure everyone in town knows, and I just wanted to give this man his recognition, but. Uh, ships, uh, Steve, uh, Richard. Patterson Junior served on the Arizona, uh, when it went down. And, uh. His name is, if you go to the, uh, the memorial that Elvis paid for. His name is there and it says Pearl. But I like, I figure if I mention it, someone might mention it so that history doesn't get lost.
Yeah.
I, I'm not old enough to have been there, but I just look it, but. It, I just figure oral history is as important as written history. And, you know, I asked a couple of kids at the school, but there's still a Richard Patterson Award at the high school. No one has a cool one.
What is for?
So that's, we just wanna bring that up. That and Merry Christmas.
That's great. Wow, good, yeah. Any, any other? None. I think we might do our acceptance of the minutes of our November thirtieth meeting. Go ahead and take a motion on that.
Okay, so what was the, make motion to, so. Council meeting was from November thirtieth, thousand twenty-one.
Second on that. All in favor?
Aye, aye.
We have to go into our executive session, so motion to go into executive session.
Yeah, like motion to go into executive session pending litigation, connected general state section, section one, the two hundred and six part B strategy and negotiations with respect to pending litigation.
And please invite attorney Capola and attorney Andrus. Thank you.
Yes. Yeah. Second. Hold it back for. Aye, aye. I mean, it'll be about, uh.
Didn't we all set for the number, right? You and Charles.
Yes, we have it. Thank you, Arosh. We have it. Kristy Center.
Yeah, so just give us a couple of minutes.
All right.